Good morning. I will call to order the May 15, 2025 meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. We have two commissioners present. Commissioner DeBello has the community college right now, so he's not able to make it. But we have quorum. We'll begin the meeting. I'll ask Sheriff to give us a delegations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll begin just by wishing the graduates of our community college, congratulations. Commissioner DeBello is there this morning. He'll be there in the afternoon. Commissioner Winder will be there in the evening today. And it's a really exciting time. Looking forward to being on the campus. It's a time of year of many milestones and celebrations in our community, and we're proud to celebrate those and lift some of those up today. So one word that has happened since our last meeting is that the Catholic Church appointed a new Pope of Leo XIV, who has some roots, is a proud graduate of Villanova University. Any Villanova folks here? I see a sheriff. Very exciting. He's the first American-born Pope, which means that when he says "football," he actually means football. So it's a milestone. And he's definitely the first person to vote in an American election. I will take some guesses as to who he voted for, but we'll leave that. We're just going to stop talking. Speaking of, I should tell you, we actually have our primary election this Tuesday, May 20th. And I think a lot of people in this room are well aware of that. If you've been involved, whether it's township levels, school boards, whether you are a judge of elections or a critical part of the process of voting, there are a number of really important positions on the ballot. Of course, our courts of common pleas, Commonwealth Court, the fall of the Supreme Court retention. This is an odd-numbered year, but it's a matted-off year. There's very important races that people should make sure their voices are heard. I encourage everyone to make a plan to vote on Tuesday. And if you haven't voted already by mail, I think about 70,000 people have requested their mail-in ballots. More than half of those have returned, so those keep coming in the door. So make sure you find your nearest drop box or get that in the mailbox soon. Although I would say at this point, don't put it in the mail. Put it in a drop box. That's the fastest way to get it directed to the county. And given what I've learned about the process of choosing a Pope, maybe we'll use some smoke signals to announce who wins the election. But it's been reported, one of the things that I think is really important is that Pope Leo has been an advocate for immigrants and the underserved, and I look forward to hearing the words that he'll share, you know, on those topics, especially at a moment where there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty and really a trend around the world of focusing inward. And our country is no stranger to that. Unfortunately, there've been periods in which we haven't welcomed immigrants. And yet, when you look at our history, we would not be the great country that we are without being a place where we've welcomed immigrants from around the world to help make America what it is. And I say that because I want to recognize that May is Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and we're celebrating the history of the community here in Montgomery County. You may not know this, but Montgomery County actually has the highest percentage of population in the Commonwealth, somewhere around eight or nine percent. And, you know, in a county of 868,000 people, that's a very significant number of people, we have 100,000 immigrants in Montgomery County. And we're going to talk a little bit about the policies that we've done to make sure that we are inclusive here. But I think it's important to recognize that, you know, we've gone through a long history where 100 years ago, Asian-Americans were literally before the U.S. Supreme Court, having served in the military in World War I, and yet were still stripped of their citizenship. And it took tremendous activism after the 1920s into the 1960s to get to a place where they had the full rights of naturalization and were able to immigrate in the same way that people from Eastern Europe and other parts of the world have been able to. So to celebrate all of the contributions that we've had here in Montgomery County, we wanted to recognize a few entrepreneurs in the Asian-American community in our county. And I'll invite all of you up after we finish this. But I'm going to start with an entrepreneur who I read about in the Philly Business Journal just a couple of weeks ago, and I asked Steve Forster, our Commerce Director, to call him and learn more about the business that he has. But you may remember that we had the coroner, Dr. Darby, come in in March. She talked about the leading causes of death in Monka and Falls were the number-two cause of death, number two out of number three in the county, behind 30 aggravated deaths, according to her analysis. And according to the CDC, the number of unintentional falls is more than 44,000 people annually. Luckily, we have an innovative business that is actually addressing this issue. So we have Ramis Sagada here. Ramis, if you will raise your hand. So we were just speaking. He's the CEO of Active Protection Technologies out of Fort Washington and the founder of a device called the Tango Belt. The Tango Belt essentially is a wearable airbag. And I wanted to wear one here in the meeting, but I was not allowed to do that. But it's designed to protect older adults from hip fractures during falls. And you have this company that works for over a decade with 12 people, and recently, after a three-year process, received FDA approval. So congratulations on your work and everything that you've done. And what's great for Montgomery County is that you're now going to be employing quadruple the number of people and are growing as a company. And we have a product that's an innovation that is going to save lives, literally, and is also creating jobs here in Monka, which we're, you know, really proud to celebrate and, you know, proud to recognize you as part of AAPI Heritage Month and being the son of the first generation of immigrants. Thank you for everything you're doing. Second, we have Earl Sambusong, and I had Paul written, but I think her mom is here too. Who's over here?
Satida.
Satida, who owned the beloved Blue Elephant Restaurant in Pottstown. Has anyone been to Blue Elephant? Amazing place. And it's in an old bank. And Commissioner Winder and I went there early on when we were campaigning. It occupies a historic building built in 1770, and you worked to preserve all of the original features while adding some modern and creative elements. And it's a unique combination of Italian, Thai, and Japanese cuisine, and a variety of sushi selections, and creative cocktails, and a really great place to bring friends and family for dinner. So I thought it was a great example of how immigrant communities are revitalizing places that are in need of that. And, you know, we welcome your entrepreneurship, your energy to contribute to more places like that around the county. And in Pottstown, it's especially welcome. So thank you for your leadership at Blue Elephant. And then finally, one more to recognize. Moshe Nigandi is here with us. I want to say thank you. So she is right here in Norristown as the owner of Mobility Plus on Main Street. And this store offers a comprehensive range of mobility products and services, including power scooters, wheelchairs, stair lifts, to make life more accessible for those who need it, at home and elsewhere. And I think it's really important because when we, you know, hear about the needs through our work as a county and social services and human services, you know, it's really important for senior citizens and others with access issues to have, you know, the technologies that enable them to fully live their lives. So I want to thank you for bringing that to Norristown and launching. And I know I wasn't able to make the launch, but we got your proclamation. I'll be there soon. But, you know, just again, very thankful for your leadership and providing an important service to the community. So please, all of you, come on up and we'll take a photo and if you have any comments. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Right up here. Right up here.
Slide it.
Slide down.
Yeah, we're going to slide it all the way down.
Slide down.
Yeah, in front of the flag. Keep going. Keep going. There we go. Very good.
All right, right here. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your contribution.
So I'd also just like to make some remarks on the topic of immigration because there is a tremendous amount of uncertainty right now in terms of what is happening nationally and how local governments have a responsibility to respond and to represent all of our residents. So, you know, we've seen instances around the country, including here in Pennsylvania, where I've gotten messages directly, students who were on visas, who were studying at Penn State, receiving notifications that they no longer had valid status and had to leave the country, and many did. And yet then, a week later, were notified that the administration rescinded that policy and, you know, and that they would have been fined to stay in the country. So there are many people who feel like the impact on their lives are not being considered in the policies that are being enacted. And there are many localities that are afraid to speak up. We saw a judge in Wisconsin who's now been charged with a crime for allegedly obstructing ICE, even though the judge was overseeing proceeding in her own courtroom. There's a lot of questions over who has control over a space like that and whether, you know, the federal government can come in and just interrupt the proceeding and make an arrest. And what we as officials have to do is provide some level of guidance and certainty where there is a lot of uncertainty, or at least what we will aspire to do is to provide guidance. So Mr. Winder and I wrote an op-ed together about our view on what the local government responsibility is in these circumstances. And in short, there is a long-recognized precedent in the U.S. Supreme Court that localities are not regional arms of the federal government, that we have a responsibility to represent our citizens and our residents as best as we can. And we can, we have the option not to, we have the option not to be commandeered or essentially deploy our resources in the aim of what we view as a misguided federal policy that does not serve the interests of Montgomery County residents. And we say that because we know that there are certain goals and pressures that are now being put on departments like ICE to reach levels of deportation. And there, in order to do that, they're going to have to target people who are, you know, in families that are mixed status, people who have children that are citizens, people who've been here for decades without having committed a crime, without having, you know, done anything other than, you know, seek to support their families. And we simply think that our local resources should not be used towards that effort. And it would cost a trillion dollars to engage in the kind of initiative that the administration is seeking to embark on. And for that same amount of money, we could fund universal pre-K, universal childcare. We could put five mental health cancers in every school in the United States. And our inclination, our understanding of our communities is that we would much rather see those resources put towards serving families rather than breaking them up. So it's our interest to do what's best for Montgomery County. And the fear that people feel of what is happening in immigration unfortunately is not helping when it comes to public safety. We hear repeatedly about citizens who are afraid to call 911, who are afraid to be witnesses to crimes or report crimes to police because they don't know what the immigration consequences could be for anyone involved. And we've got to keep people safe. We've got to make people comfortable to be witnesses. We want to make people feel safe about seeking a protection from abuse order if that's something that they need. And so the county is going to be working on a number of policies. And there's not just doing one, you know, policy where we say suddenly we're welcoming now. That's not how this is going to work. It's going to take a lot of thought. It's going to take a lot of conversations with those who are in many different offices across the county, and a lot of legal dynamics. That's going to take time to do it right. But it's our view that in Montgomery County, and we just showed this, is that, you know, immigrants are essential to our community. Immigrants are part of the fabric of our community, and our county would simply not be where it is today without our valuing of immigrant communities. So that's something that we want to assert. And we will not be signing the 287-G agreement as other counties or officials in counties have indicated they will. So it's important to put that out there. Finally, and on that note, well, there's one more thing I'll say after this, but I want to thank our sheriff for being a sheriff who is almost done representing our county authentically, who keeps us safe every day in this building and in the courthouse, and his team does a tremendous job on a number of things that you may not even hear about. They're always out in the field, you know, whether it's issuing, you know, summons and subpoenas, which, you know, every time you do that, it's a risk that you're taking. You know, they exhibit professionalism, bravery, courage in everything that they do. And I'm very proud to share that they have received for the fifth consecutive time through the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission their accreditation for the office. And it's significant accomplishment that reflects years of commitment. So I'm honored to welcome Chief Lee Benson to honor, who will give Sean Contini the award. Is that correct? Okay, got it. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone here. It's a pleasure to be here today at the Commissioners' Meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Mckeja, Commissioner Winder. Sad Commissioner DeBello is not here. He's here for a great event. Our community college is a treasurer. I had the pleasure of serving on the board 12 years there, and what a great day community college graduation is. So I'm proud to stand before you to share that the Montgomery County Sheriff's Association has received accreditation by the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police for the fifth time. This goes back to, I believe, Sheriff Bear, who preceded me in 2010 and got the credit, or it might have been Sheriff Duranty. The accomplishment represents more than a certificate on the wall. The Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Program sets rigorous standards nearly every aspect of law enforcement, organization, management, use of force policies, fiscal practices, legal mandates, property, evidence, control, and more. And I can tell you, for example, when this was very beneficial, when the accreditation and constantly looking at our policies, when the country was going through much tumult about the role of law enforcement in relation to George Floyd and various other law enforcement practices, our related chokeholds and various things like that, we were ahead of the game. We had our accreditation. We had our policies in line. And I was able to put up our policies the next day to put anybody at ease related to that. And that's because of the rigorous process that we go through daily. But it's not me. It's the folks behind me that are really doing this. The accreditation process is very demanding. It starts with self-assessment and audits of all our files, policies, equipment in the field. And our accreditation manager over here, Lieutenant Stewart, and Corporal Volk and Deputy Cagliola are the ones that really took the lead on the accreditation. So what I'm going to do is after I finish my remarks, I'm going to ask Lieutenant Stewart to come up, and then Chief Benson. Chief Benson is a Montgomery County resident, worked in Montgomery County for 35 years, culminating in chief of upper double in township before Chester County sold him and went over to West Whiteland. So it's a pleasure to have a friend here, and it's nice of him to come over the county line and honor us here today because he's in charge of the Pennsylvania Chiefs and the accreditation process. So I'd like to thank him and the Law Enforcement Accreditation Committee for conducting the vital accreditation, ensuring that the integrity of our standards were upheld. So we are proud to represent Montgomery County. We're proud to be accredited for the fifth time. The highest standards in law enforcement you have here, that's what your taxpayer dollars are being spent on. And we have a real partnership with the Commissioners. People ask me all the time, they're like, "How do you get along with your Commissioners?" We go to Sheriff's Association meetings, and there are often tumultuous relationships with Commissioners. But I can say the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office has a friend in our county Commissioners and a partner. So I really want to praise you for that. So next, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Stewart to say a few words, followed by Chief Benson.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Lieutenant Stewart of the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. I'm the accreditation manager, along with my partners here, Deputy John Cagliola and Ryan Volk. We work in tandem to make sure that all the policies of the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office are in place and fit the Accreditation Commission's standards. So there's 134 standards that we must meet. Every three years, we get re-accredited through those 134 standards. And it goes beyond the 134 standards. I don't know if Chief Benson will point that out, but for each standard, there might be five or six bullet points that we have to hit on every year to show that we are, in fact, adhering to all the standards they put forth. I want to thank the chief and the sheriff for supporting the program, the PA Chiefs of Police for sponsoring this and being able to put these standards out for us to be able to accomplish. I also want to reminisce by thanking Jeff Cagliola and Corporal Volk and the whole department for buying into the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, and thank you for having me here today. It's really an honor to be here as a Montgomery County resident and former Montgomery County law enforcement official. I did jump ship to Chester County, and I like it there a lot, but I still am a proud resident of Montgomery County. So a lot has already been said about the program. Lieutenant Stewart mentioned that there's 130-some standards, but actually, they have to meet, it's close to like 300, 400 additional bullet points, which really makes us special to get this done once again, every three years. So it's my honor. I would love to present this to the sheriff. Thank you very much. And the chief. Chief, come on in here.
Chief, come on in and squeeze in here, chief.
This was voted on, unanimous vote at our last Plea Act meeting, which was on April 24th, and we're happy to present this now to the sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your work. I appreciate it. Anytime.
Now, thank you, Sheriff. I certainly appreciate the partnership, and your team never ceases to amaze me in terms of the great work and standard of excellence that you set for your office. So thank you for your leadership, and congrats to the team. I know anything that's related to accreditation is complex and requires a lot of detail, so I'm glad that you got over the finish line there.
Sheriff Mckeja, was it too much to ask for a picture real quick?
Oh, yeah. Come on up. Yeah, please. Thanks. Yeah. I was going to say.
Exactly. Oh, I'm sorry.
Of course. Yeah, sure. Get everybody. Let's spread out.
Can we get maybe one or two come on this side?
Lee, why don't you come over here? I'm going to hold the thing. There we go. Yeah.
And try to get one of you on the side. Okay. And then Sheriff, I'm going to ask you to scoot over to the other side.
This way?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'll do it. Do what I'm told. All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
One more.
One more. Okay. All right. Sorry, more. We're back.
All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats. Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
My pleasure.
Good to see you.
Thanks. Okay. And then final note, and you're going to hear more about this, Commissioner Winder, but I just want to say we had an amazing, very important development last night at 12:40 PM, AM? Sorry. 12:40 AM, where Norristown made a great step forward to provide shelter for the homeless. And it's been something that's five years in the works, and it wouldn't have happened without the leadership of the county. And Commissioner Winder was there till the very end, making the case. So thank you for your leadership, and we'll hear more about it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, good morning, everyone. How's everyone doing? Doing okay? Good. I don't like that energy. Are we doing okay? Good. Okay, good. You know, first, I want to thank Commissioner Mckeja for honoring these great business owners. Some of them have left. And just honoring the diversity that makes Montgomery County great. I know we talk a lot behind the scenes about living out our values and despite what's happening at the federal level, keeping those values intact and having the courage to continue to lead and support everyone that calls Montgomery County home. Also, want to thank you for partnering on, you know, to step out and do that op-ed takes a lot of courage. And this is a moment when, you know, we have elected officials that are being targeted, under attack, and, you know, it's always risky to put ourselves out there. And thank you for your leadership and your ability to know the law because you're a lawyer. I am not, but was happy to sign on to that op-ed with you, and we got a lot of traction. So thank you for the team who supported us. And thank you to the Philadelphia Inquirer editorial board for publishing it. It was really important. So yes, I was up very late last evening, well into the morning. I don't think I've been up until 12:30 AM since I was in college, and that was a long time ago. But it was for a good cause. And many of you know that Norristown, the Norristown area has been home for me for more than four decades. I bought my first house in Norristown. I went to Norristown area public schools. And so when I had the opportunity to become Commissioner, I knew that I wanted to try to tackle some of the challenges that the Norristown area is facing head-on. We know we can't tackle challenges in a vacuum. We know it takes partnerships. We know it takes courage. And last night was an example of that. So I'm really grateful that last night, myself, along with many county employees, if you were there in the room with me last night until 12:39, 12:40 in the morning, raise your hand. Who was there? If you were there, okay? Thank you for being there. Our colleagues and I presented a proposal to open a 50-bed transitional housing program next to the county's Human Services Campus on DeKalb Street. We were all there until about 12:30 last evening, testifying in front of Norristown's zoning board, meaning to advocate for this important initiative that will help our friends, our most vulnerable friends and neighbors who struggle with having a safe, reliable, and consistent place to live, including those sleeping in cars, couch surfing, or in unstable After six hours of testimony and public comments, that the zoning board voted in favor of our county's proposal. And, you know, we recognize that the journey to get here has been quite challenging. We know that the CHOC closed in 2021, and there was no alternative to really support single adults facing homelessness. And I'm just really grateful that municipalities are stepping up to be a part of the solution. We know that ending homelessness is complex, and it's only through many partnerships that the county has made this kind of progress. And I'm so proud that now we can say that Norristown is one of our many municipal partners, including Pottstown and Lansdale, that showed the courage and showed the will to be a part of the solution and partner with the county on this very important mission. So first, I want to applaud the zoning board for their courage to do the right thing. That conversation last night, at times, got quite difficult. They asked very hard questions. The community shared their feedback, both, you know, the challenging feedback, concerns that they had, but also many people in the community showing support. So anytime you sit on a board and you have to go through six hours' worth of testimony and public comment, I just want to applaud them. And I want to offer my sincere gratitude to the people, many of the people in this room, at the county, and the community that showed up to support. So I just want to acknowledge a couple of people on our county team. Kaylee Silver, Patty Guttenplan, and Robbie Robbins, who were witnesses with me last night at the zoning meeting. Yvonne Montgomery, who led the project for our solicitor's office. Thomas, Thomas is in the back. We brought him on to really kind of shepherd this effort and ensure that we made tangible progress. Really grateful to you and your leadership there. Steve from our Commerce Department, thank you for engaging the business community and really working on the stakeholder mapping and getting them to the table and getting them to believe in what this project could do. Jesse King and Shom Lee from our assets and infrastructure team. This was not the only location that we looked at. This is like eight or nine months of thought in terms of strategically where could we put this location, and it's a temporary location. Our comms team, who probably is sick of me at this point, for just, you know, helping to get the message out there and just dispel some of the misinformation that was out there about the project. And I know there are so many other people that did work behind the scenes on our county team, so I just want to say thank you. I was also heartened to see so many community members, advocates, and partners who showed up and stayed up late. There were 48 people on the list for public comment last night, and many of them were there to offer support. I want to thank Council President Rebecca Smith. I've been working alongside her in this effort, and I want to thank former Council President Tom LaPara for partnering with me and the county initially. Council President Smith, her remarks really just acknowledged our shared commitment that has defined our collaboration since the beginning, and so many people came together to work on this, and so I want to say thank you to all. This is what government is all about, neighbors helping neighbors. I also want to just take a moment to clear up what this project is and what it is not, as there, as I mentioned, has been some misinformation. This project is not a drop-in homeless shelter. It's an emergency, short-term transitional housing program that provides wraparound services 24/7, year-round. This is not a halfway house. It's a supportive pipeline to permanent housing that can serve up to 50 people at a time and hundreds over the course of a year. Those who receive services at this facility will be prescreened, single adults. No walk-ins, no drop-offs will be permitted. Security measures, we've taken the security of this facility seriously, and so I want to thank our security team, because we're going to include onsite officers and 24/7 monitoring. And the county aims to open this facility at the beginning of next year. So again, this was such an important step, I literally almost cried. I don't know if I was going to cry because I was tired or because we know how much work went into yesterday. So again, congrats all for making this milestone happen. We still have a lot, a lot of work to do, but this is a step in the right direction. So thanks again. This month is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I think it's important to shine a spotlight on an organization that is doing great work in our community and across the state. The PA Youth Advocacy Network is a statewide network of student leaders who use their voices and skills to build awareness and push for increased mental health support across Pennsylvania, for Pennsylvania teens. Teens are especially vulnerable group, exposed to so, so many pressures at a time when their brains and minds are still developing. The work these students do to promote mental health in their schools, across the Commonwealth, and to our state legislature is incredibly impressive. And we thank these young students for their work, and we thank Sarah Pessi, Policy Specialist with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation, who launched the PA Youth Advocacy Network in 2018. Unfortunately, she could not be here today, so on behalf of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, we recognize May 23rd as Teen Mental Health Awareness Day in Pennsylvania. Next, I'd like to acknowledge an outstanding county employee and leader who's being recognized for her efforts to support some of our most vulnerable people in our community, Pam Howard. Pam, should I make you stand for my hole? I'm going to make you stand, so everybody can talk to Pam. Pam works in our Department of Health and Human Services, in the Office of Mental Health, Developmental Disabilities, and Early Intervention, and she is this year's recipient of the Righteous Person Award. This award is presented by Tikfa, a grassroots nonprofit that works to improve the lives of people with mental illness. For decades, Pam has continued to be a tireless and passionate advocate for people with mental health and behavioral health issues. She was a pioneer for peer support, not just in Montgomery County, but throughout the Commonwealth. She has played a key role in working with our homeless community through Your Way Home. She has advocated for mental health for individuals involved in the justice system, and she has also worked to ensure that these programs we deliver at the county are trauma-informed. Pam, we know you're an amazing leader. I've gotten to know you over the last four years and your work, and we know that you're a champion for the people in Montgomery County. So I want to just congratulate you on your award and invite you up for a picture. Congratulations. So next, I'm proud and excited to welcome our next guest to today's meeting, Evan Wang. Evan, good to see you again. Evan is a young poet whose work has been featured all across the country, including in NPR, the Smithsonian Institute, Roosevelt Memorial House, the Miami Book Fair. I know the list is really long, and so many others. In 2022, he was named Montgomery County's First Youth Poet Laureate. This year, he graduates from Upper Marion High School and will attend Harvard University in the fall. Congratulations on that. But that's not why we're here, to congratulate you, but that's something to celebrate. Today, we recognize Evan as he has been announced as the National Youth Poet Laureate for 2025. So I've gotten to know you over the last couple of years. I've seen your work, and this is just such a huge honor and a point of pride for Montgomery County. And so I want to just invite you up to say a few words, and then we'll take a picture up here. So can you go to the podium for me?
Say or perform?
Well, I don't, yeah, he's probably going to perform. He's going to ask you.
Hi, good morning. It is so wonderful to be here again and to see you guys amazing. So thank you so much for having me. This is such an honor. I think a lot of people don't know what the role of a National Youth Poet Laureate is. So in this role, I basically champion the cause of poetry across the country, and I represent the youth poetry community. So throughout this next year, during my term, I'll be advocating for various causes that I'm passionate about, such as public health, racial understanding, and democracy, while also, of course, leading a bunch of youth poets to strive towards civic engagement and also literacy. So yes, I will read a quick poem as well. I prepared a short poem today, but then Commissioner Makija was talking about immigration earlier, and I thought maybe I should talk about that as well. So I changed my plans, and this is the poem I will be reading. The title is in Mandarin. It's titled Xin Chantong, which means "New Tradition." New tradition. Let it be known, we circled barefooted the parking lot, searching for our car, last seen by villagers to be ferrying torsos across a river, no matter, the living do what they know best. From this foreign shore I now call streets, I hand body parts to you for wear, a father's shoulder, a mother's back. At home, everyone is missing a chest, taken by a bullet tracing itself through a new frontier, and I name it immigrant. There, you wear your country's skin well. When the sun gives, you could hang it alongside my wedding dress, but I am a boy, and you looked into my face bruised with makeup to remind me, so you don't. Though I am your son, it's too easy to forget how I ran from love, how the Chinese knight eats its simple men, how these streets swallow cars whole. One thing is easy to keep. Your old language I use for poems and pillow talk. Here's one. The jade talismans you brought over from the village have made like a wishbone and split itself home. Follow it, but you can't. Your tires are slashed, you run, but everywhere is made of streets and everything is slashed. Come back. We are in the parking lot again, holding your son, stroking his cheek, finding in his mouth the second half of everything you've ever wanted. Thank you.
So thank you, Evan. We're going to have you come up. And Evan is the nation's ninth poet laureate, youth poet laureate, right? And he follows the footsteps of the country's inaugural youth poet, Amanda Gorman. And remember that poet, poem, "The Hill We Climb." So come on up. Let's celebrate you.
Right here. Go ahead, go ahead. All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, I'm almost done, I promise. All right. So next up, we have our Way to Go MOCO winners for May. So first, Caroline Benitez from Voter Services. Where are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. There you are. She handles poll workers for 426, right? Is that the right number? Precincts. And that's just such a huge undertaking, and she works unimaginably hard to make our in-person elections happen each election cycle. I've been in Voter Services on Election Day and seeing the work that you do, so thank you and congratulations on being a Way to Go MOCO winner. Linda Severson, there's Linda from the Prithana Terry's office. I know how to say that now, two years later. Along with her normal duties, Linda is the office mom. I think we need an office mom for the eighth floor. Do we have one? We can borrow you some, someday. But in all seriousness, your team shared that you're the office mom, and you keep morale high and the workday interesting, and you make the office a welcoming place. And we know that when you're sometimes coming into that office, you may be going through some challenging times. So thank you, Linda, and congratulations. Nicole Stevens from IT, there's Nicole. How are you? Nikki, right? Go by Nikki, is excellent at creative economical solutions to enhance the efficiency and extract the most valuable, the most value from every single taxpayer dollar. Equally important, she's down-to-earth, compassionate, and brightens our days. So that was from your team. Congratulations, Nikki. Thanks for all that you do. Richard Falcone, Richard provides, he's not here, he's from our district court. Richard provides incredible service, and his strong leadership and organizational skills keeps us running. And James McAllier from Pre-Trial Services, Jim exhibits leadership qualities that every supervisor should have. Jim continues to show up every single day with a positive attitude, which motivates us to succeed. So congratulations for the Way to Go MOCO winners. If you could come up for a picture? We want to...
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. It's good to see you. Congratulations. It's good to see you. I appreciate that.
One, two, three.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Okay. So Commissioner Makija already mentioned graduation at the Montgomery County Community College. I'm proud to serve as a trustee on that board, and so this will be my first graduation serving as a trustee. So I'm excited to be there. I'm doing the six o'clock, you're doing the two o'clock, and Commissioner DiBello, as we know, is doing the 10 o'clock. So we want to make sure that as commissioners, we're supporting our local jewel in our community college, and just want to say congratulations to all of the graduates. And last but not least, we know that Memorial Day is coming up, and it's next weekend, it's a little earlier this year. I feel like it's a little earlier. Maybe it just snuck up on me. Whether you are traveling, spending time with family, or attending a local parade, I just want to wish everyone a peaceful, long weekend. Let's not forget the reason for Memorial Day. For many people, this is a time to reflect on memories of friends, neighbors, and family members who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the name of serving our country. I know I mentioned the last two Memorial Days, that my sister-in-law died serving in the Navy in 2018. She was 23 years old and died while doing a training exercise in the Red Sea. And so we will be taking time as a flick family to reflect on her service to our country, and I'm sure there are many people that have loved ones who have given the ultimate sacrifice. There are services, there are parades taking place all across the county, and if you are able, I encourage you to not just go to the beach, not just go to a barbecue, but take time to remember those on this Memorial Day. And I want to just say thank you to all of our local veterans and veteran families for your service, and those that are actually currently serving in active duty. Your dedicated work, make sure that we never forget the men and women that have given the ultimate sacrifice. And in closing, I'd like to welcome my new intern, Miriam. Miriam, we're just going to have you stand up. Miriam will be joining me for the summer. She is a student at the University of Pennsylvania. I've gotten to know Miriam. Her family immigrated to this country from Egypt, and she's really interested in learning about how policy happens, how government... And so this will be my first graduation serving as a trustee. So I'm excited to be there. I'm doing the six o'clock, you're doing the two o'clock. And Commissioner DeBello, as we know, is doing the 10 o'clock. So we want to make sure that as commissioners, we're supporting our local jewel in our community college and just want to say congratulations to all of the graduates. And last but not least, we know that Memorial Day is coming up and it's next weekend, it's a little earlier this year. I feel like it's a little earlier, maybe it just snuck up on me. Whether you are traveling, spending time with family, or attending a local parade, I just want to wish everyone a peaceful, long weekend. Let's not forget the reason for Memorial Day. For many people, this is a time to reflect on memories of friends, neighbors, and family members who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the name of serving our country. I know I mentioned the last two Memorial Days, that my sister-in-law died serving in the Navy in 2018. She was 23-years-old and died while doing a training exercise in the Red Sea. And so we will be taking time as a flick family to reflect on her service to our country. And I'm sure there are many people that have loved ones who have given the ultimate sacrifice. There are services, there are parades taking place all across the county. And if you are able, I encourage you to not just go to the beach, not just go to a barbecue, but take time to remember those on this Memorial Day. And I want to just say thank you to all of our local veterans and veteran families for your service and those that are actually currently serving in active duty. Your dedicated work, make sure that we never forget the men and women that have given the ultimate sacrifice. And in closing, I'd like to welcome my new intern, Miriam. Miriam, we're just gonna have you stand up. Miriam will be joining me for the summer. She is a student at the University of Pennsylvania. I've gotten to know Miriam. Her family immigrated to this country from Egypt and she's really interested in learning about how policy happens, how government works. She has interest in becoming an attorney. Maybe she should have been your intern, Commissioner Makija. But we take personal pride in investing in young minds and giving people the opportunity to explore careers, especially in local government. So Miriam is not on the payroll just yet. She starts on Monday, but I invited her to come and join us at the board meeting. So Miriam, welcome to the team and look forward to working with you this summer. So that's the question.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to the agenda. We have two brief presentations. First, I'll ask Ken Davidson, President of the Ambulance Association, and Brian Kuklinski, President of EMS Advisory Council. It'll be Recognizing EMS Week.
Good morning, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to share a few words with you today. My name is Brian Kuklinski. I'm the Executive Director for Lower Providence Ambulance. I also have the honor to serve as the President of the Montgomery County EMS Council. I've been in EMS for the past 29 years in all within Montgomery County. So been doing this for a little while. I just wanted to take a moment to honor and recognize there's 1,999 licensed EMS providers through the Montgomery County. Along with that is several others that are registered outside of Montgomery County that but served one of the communities within Montgomery County. These men and women, they're both, you know, either career volunteers. They basically, you know, deal with the challenging situations every day, both physically and mentally, while serving the communities that they serve. In 2024, there was over 91,000 dispatches for EMS in Montgomery County, which equates to about 250 calls a day or 10 calls per hour. So there is a consistent need for EMS in the county. Their jobs are demanding, you know, both just physically and mentally. Obviously, we're celebrating the Mental Health Awareness Month. So my comment out to the providers is, you know, please reach out at any time. There's many programs out there to provide any, to help with any challenges that they may be going through. I'd also like to recognize officers, administrators, and Board of Directors within the EMS agencies. Sometimes, most of these positions are voluntary, but they, you know, depending on their position or roles, you know, these positions, you know, they see the same challenges that, across all the organizations, that EMS organizations such as, you know, ensuring we have full schedules to make sure that trucks are on the street, especially in a current industry that has a very limited labor supply of individuals coming up through the ranks and getting into the EMS system. Along with, you know, increased costs, trying to figure out where funding's coming for the next big capital purchase, along with just retention of individuals. You know, sometimes providers, the neighboring squads pay more, so they might jump ship and go down the street to pay the other one, or we're seeing a lot of people moving out of EMS in general. So, you know, as we've seen in the last five, seven years, EMS across the Commonwealth is struggling. We're seeing a lot of agencies closed down permanently. Unfortunately, that leads to increased lead times, increased, it causes delay of service through the individuals and patient care. So I would like to, you know, just kind of say, you know, we need to kind of continue to work together. There are 17 agencies currently. We need to find a long-term solution to help make sure that their, our EMS system is resilient in Montgomery County and that we can continue to provide the service. I'd like to thank the commissioners for their vision and their support for the Montgomery County EMS study. I think even during that, I had the opportunity to be on the Steering Committee. During that study, we started noticing a lot of municipalities and EMS agencies starting to work together. I know several municipalities have actually implemented or developed and implemented EMS funding streams. So I think it's great and I honor that initial commitment from the municipalities, but I don't think our work is 100% done. You know, I think at the EMS level, we need to try to continue to engage, you know, partnerships between, you know, local agencies, the county, and EMS agencies themselves. At the EMS council level, I'm trying to engage our council to look at different recommendations from that study and figure out how the council themselves can maybe help support and facilitate, you know, some of those recommendations that were made throughout that study. Over time, I think EMS has been a change, the structure of EMS in the county. As you read through the study, we talked about, you know, potentially some agencies may be forming an authority model, some may merge together, or there's still going to be agencies, there are going to be standalone organizations, and I think we need to support all three of those structures, you know, and continue to allow them to provide the care that they do to the community in Montgomery County. And in closing, I just want to personally thank, you know, EMS providers, especially with next week being EMS Week. You know, provide, you know, these providers dedicate, put a lot of commitment, hard work, tears, sweat, blood. You know, every day they work for, sometimes work for multiple agencies, you know. We want to just kind of recognize that their commitment doesn't go unnoticed and it's always appreciated. And again, I'd like to thank the commissioners and the Montgomery County staff that continually just provide support to the EMS system and I look forward to future discussions and partnerships to help the EMS system.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ken Davidson. I'm the Assistant Chief of Second Armored Rescue Squad. I'll soon be entering my 33rd year of service at SARS, where I've transitioned from a young, 16-year-old eager volunteer to the role where I have the privilege of leading a career staff of close to 80 providers supplemented by a group of dedicated volunteers. For the past decade, I've had the honor of serving on the Montgomery County Ambulance Association Board many of those years as the President. And for several years now, I've had the honor to serve as the Region 10 Director of the Ambulance Association of Pennsylvania, representing not only Montgomery, but also Chester, Delaware, and Bucks Counties at the state level. I want to thank you for having us today in honor of EMS Week and recognizing the efforts of the hundreds of dedicated EMS providers to dedicate their lives to serving the residents and visitors of Montgomery County. I'd like to urge you to find ways for the county to honor and support those professionals and their agencies year-round. I want to thank you for the efforts you've taken over the past few years to study and analyze our current EMS system and to look at the many strengths we have, as well as the inevitable weaknesses we all face. As our friends in the hospital administration world would say, these are opportunities for improvement. I want to urge you to take the information that has been collected and put the, and put into the comprehensive report and help us to use it to attempt to make those improvements. I want to thank you for trying to engage our local municipal leaders and elected officials in the study and working to bring them to the table as we focus on our collective efforts to strengthen our current system. I want to urge you to work to find ways for the county government to partner with local municipal governments to help provide the support and oversight that will be needed if we're going to accomplish these goals. In recent years, having the opportunity to work with peers from across the Commonwealth, I have learned that it is not only possible for the challenges we are seeing here in Montgomery County to get worse, but that in fact, they are already significantly worse in other parts across Pennsylvania. We frequently take a self-critical look at our systems and we're concerned that we're seeing response times that are increasing from six to seven minutes to 12 or 13 minutes. And rightly so, we want to find ways to fix that. That being said, there are areas of Pennsylvania where a typical response time is 30 to 40 minutes, with multiple agencies closing their doors in recent years. There are some residents facing response times of 60 minutes or greater for serious medical emergencies when every second counts. I won't spend time getting you a breakdown of all the various factors that have caused EMS in these parts of the state to spiral into complete failure, but I will share with you that a root cause analysis, you would find that it's a failure of planning and establishing for consistent, sufficient, sustainable funding and revenue sources. Most of the agencies that have been forced to shut their doors after decades of service to their communities are just like the department I represent that has been serving since 1938, unlike our brother and sister departments here in Montgomery County. Unfortunately, for a variety of factors, including pride and hubris, many of these agencies did not ask their communities or the regional authorities for the needed support until it was too late if they asked at all. Others asked and those requests fell on deaf ears, or worse yet, on local governments who chose to willfully ignore their requests for help. I stand here today on behalf of my agency, the Montgomery County Ambulance Association, and the Ambulance Association of Pennsylvania, to thank you for starting the discussion to identify the challenges being faced by those of us who make up Montgomery County EMS. And I urge you to take the steps necessary to be a part of the solution as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You know, thank you for your work, thank you for your service, and highlighting that there is a lot of work we have to do as a county and bringing together all the different agencies to make sure we can best serve our residents and we're absolutely committed to that in the ways that you recognized and many more. So, look forward to following up on all those conversations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I would just say, just thank you for being here and taking the time and obviously, you both have been in the profession for some time and you're doing that advocacy work to make sure that the system is invested in. I've seen firsthand, just, you know, in caring for two disabled parents and how often EMS workers have, you know, have, professionals have been in and out of my own home and just the care and compassion, especially dealing with my mother when she was going through dementia and all that good stuff. It's those moments where you all are on the scene first, right? Supporting family members, supporting loved ones, and transitioning them to the hospital or wherever they need to go. So I just want to thank you and your team members for the work and we continue to look for ways to partner with you and make sure that you have the investments to protect our public safety net. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to come up, we'll recognize our proclamation and just to reiterate, 91,000 calls every year is how many to respond to.
Thank you for being here. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. Good to see you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Come on over here.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Next, we're gonna hear from Sam Applefield, our Food Policy Program Coordinator. They launched the Adventure Farm Stand Challenge. AgVenture.
AgVenture, exactly. Good morning. Thanks so much for having me here today. Happy to give a quick update on a program I've been working on with some of my colleagues in Health and Human Services, as well as the Planning Commission and Communications Office called AgVenture. So the goal of AgVenture here is to really try and connect community members with local agriculture, with local farms through a kind of fun and interactive experience. We kind of took inspiration from the Trail Challenge and thought about how could we do something similar to encourage folks to go visit some of the close to 600 farms that we have throughout the county. So we looked at a few other examples. In Berks County, they have the Berks Agricultural Resource Network, or the Barnopoly, which is a similar idea. And Visit Pennsylvania has something called Scoop, which is an ice cream trail to go visit, you know, local dairy farms that make ice cream. So for our version, we decided to set up a bingo card, which you can see on the screen here. It has a variety of different activities, things like pick your own flowers, complete a corn maze, visit a farmer's market. And the idea is pretty straightforward. People will complete these activities, take a picture as they do, and then submit those pictures along with their completed bingo card. And we have, you know, a simple form for people to be able to submit those things. And then we have a few different prizes, depending on how many rows or columns you complete, things like a mug or a lunchbox or a cooler bag with our, with the AgVenture logo on it there. So to help people find farms where you can complete all the different activities on the card, we have a new tool from the Planning Commission, the Field to Families Map. So you can filter, using that map, you can filter to find farms that offer these different activities and, you know, and then go to complete them there. AgVenture will be opening on May 30th, so at the end of the month, and will be open for about six months until the end of November. We're coordinating with libraries and farmers markets and other kind of community spaces to make hard copies of the bingo card available. And we'll also be launching a website so you can download it and get more information about it there. Yeah, I think that we have a kickoff event planned at Necessity Farms in Telford on Friday the 30th, so we're looking forward to that and to people having some AgVentures in the county. That's all.
Thank you. I want to see a version of those bingo boards where it's all ice cream related and then I'm pulling in. Okay, so we will move on to first, public comment related to today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts, limited to three minutes. Do we have any public commenters on these topics?
Karen D'Angelo.
Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Karen D'Angelo, the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library, and I am here to comment on Exhibit 13. I'd like to thank the Monaco 2040 Committee for recommending and for you for considering the Red Hill Borough's request for Upper Perkyomen Valley Library improvements. The Upper Perkyomen Valley Library is one of our four branches and they are asking for improvements that will help with safety and accessibility issues. So thank you very much for considering it. And as you know, public libraries are one of the places where people can come, no matter where they're from, what their housing situations are, completely for free to find services and information. Thanks.
Thank you.
David Morgan. Go ahead. He's here. Thanks, right there.
Hello, I'm David Morgan from Ambler. Related to the agenda with EMS, I just want to commend EMS personnel because my daughter's one of them. She saved someone's life who was having cardiac arrest and was honored at a meeting. And it doesn't take a lot of training. She went to the Monaco two-year program and then she went to do an EMS program about half a year related to a hospital. And then after serving, she became paramedic. So this is about another year. And so it's just, if you're a person who's ready and you're good at diagnosing, like our dog, something wrong with a dog, see, that's a great three or four to consider to help this gap. And now going on to the other item agendas, they mentioned Exhibit B, Prevention for Teens. We talked about teen mental health and I commend those efforts. That's Exhibit B, talking about mental illnesses and things like that with the number two. So that there's a whole area of things going on there. And one area I think with teens that I feel for is so much media time, so much on the phone time, that I feel that they're missing out on face-to-face and nature activities in life. So if that could be addressed too, it would be more constructive for their lives and they meet more people and help out more people. Then going back to A, Evan talks about youth prevention, education for drugs. And part of a constellation of the problem with that is sometimes lack of pain, or pain or lack of love in life. And so also I commend any efforts to help with chastity. I mentioned that before. Chastity is a friendship-seeking outlook to eventually get married and to be lifelong committed to someone. And as the Bible, it says about, "A man will leave his mother and father and become married to his wife," in the very beginning of the Bible in Genesis. So I think it's really important to emphasize the idea of getting the whole person well, not objectification, because we see that, as I mentioned, in the term "human resources." That's used so much that people are not human resources, we want to call them that. So if you can have that as part of the components of youth prevention, because here's the hard thing to relate, is that if someone takes a pill and loses their child at home, the trauma of seeing that child almost moving sometimes. So that would really affect me if I was a person in that situation. Not, I know I'm not a woman, but anyway, that's something to consider is how to encourage chastity. It's a much healthier way to live and I found it very rewarding. So then other particular things, like a squeeze, I guess, the swing space seems really high with that page, about that, page three, 1,165 for this building. So maybe it could be reduced. Thank you.
Any other comments for today's?
Kate Firestone.
Of course, thanks.
Kate Firestone.
No, I thought it was gonna be General.
Okay, sounds good. No, General makes sense, unless it's on the vote. Okay.
Amelia Botigo.
It's also for General.
General. Okay.
It's not, it's not on one of the votes, right? That's for General. Okay. Because we're not voting on anything right now. Okay.
So we'll move on to Zoom. Randy Libros.
I'll just check the topic. And we'll get there pretty quickly.
Randy? Okay.
I have to unmute, thanks.
We'll move on to Brian Daley.[1777.33]
Randy, can you hear us?
Randy.
I have to unmute things.
We'll move on to Brian Daley. Brian, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now? Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. I want to make a comment on the Commissioners' comments. I applaud Commissioners McKeja and Winder for their comments today and their op-ed in yesterday's Inquirer about the community's, the county's noncompliance with ICE oppression. Thanks for standing up for the residents of our county, especially the most vulnerable, and for the rule of law. And congratulations to Commissioner McKeja for his Emmy nominations for his video on voter fraud and true election integrity. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a star among us. Don't run off to Hollywood, okay?
We'll see if we win. We'll see if we win. Okay, all right, we'll have the rest on General. Thank you for your comment. Really appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go through the agenda, and then we'll have another period in which people can provide comments and check my social. I'll share the video that he's talking about. So we're going to move on to approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the May 1st, 2025 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Moving on to a resolution for the applications of funding for the Monco 2040 Grant Program. It's Scott France.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. And you're actually going to hear more from my colleague, Ann Levitt Gruberger, with the County Planning Commission. But I just want to give a quick introduction. This is the 10th year of the Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Program. So we're super excited. The most grant money given in that period, given in one year, $3 million. And Ann's going to tell us all about the wonderful projects that are in this year's batch. But I just wanted to point out, you know, how valuable this program is and how much we support the Commissioners' support of the program. This is really one of the best opportunities we have to implement the county comprehensive plan. And the beauty of it is, we're going out to the communities, we're letting them tell us what projects are needed in their communities and what they can do with these resources. So not only do we see the goals of the comprehensive plan being met, but we're seeing it at a level that local residents benefit from. And you can go almost anywhere in the county now, after these 10 years, and find a project or see the results of this project. And I also want to take just one moment to acknowledge, with us today is Dulcie Flaherty. She chaired the review committee this year, and they had the biggest task ever with, what, 31 applications? Really, we had to go two, three-hour marathon sessions, as well as a lot of time spent outside those to review the applications. She's also our vice chair of our Planning Commission Board, and just want to thank her for coming out and supporting the program with us today. So I'll hand it over to Ann, and also recognize Chloe Moore, who's up here, who was instrumental part of the staff that creates this.
I feel like there's nothing left to say now. I am just going to make a quick summary of the program and this year's award recipients. As Scott mentioned, this is the 10th year of the Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Program. In the last nine cycles, we have received 228 applications, many millions in requests, and have awarded 140 grants for a total of $17.7 million, a not insignificant amount of money. At this point, 53 of our municipalities have received funding for projects. And in this year, 2025, we, like Scott said, we received 31 applications, the highest number we've had in quite some time, and from 27 municipalities, and a total of about $6 million requests for projects. Our focus categories have been pretty similar over the last several years. We get a lot of requests and make a lot of grant awards for projects that fall under our Walk and Bike Monco category, which not surprisingly promotes walkability and bikability. So people want to install sidewalks, trails, bike amenities, things of that nature. That's been an important part of this program. We've also got focus categories that look at adaptation and resiliency, as well as supporting downtowns and other improvements. The Grant Committee looks at a lot of different criteria as they make their decisions. The committee itself is made up of staff from both the Office of Housing and Community Development and our Commerce Department, as well as Planning Commission staff. We also have a handful of MCPC board members who join Dulcie in the staff. And we look at a lot of different things. We look at how the project connects into local and county plans and other local policies. We look at connections to county assets. Does this enhance connectivity to a county park, for example? And we look at the impact of the project. How many people do we think it will reach? What's the longevity of the improvements that we are helping to fund? How impactful it might be overall? As well as local funding and other grants that might be leveraged. We look at diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how that might have played into the local decision-making process. And also how ready the project is. Some of these projects are quite big and take a long time to come to fruition. We want to make sure that these projects are at least close to being ready to go. So in this year, 2025, we have awards starting with East Greenville Borough, who is, which is making improvements to Action Park. They'll be adding a loop trail through the park and connecting to ADA-compliant facilities. They'll be installing updated park furniture, like benches and tables, those educational Next up, a joint application from Hatfield Township Borough. They are going to be installing bike racks and fixing stations on municipally-owned property, installing wayfinding signage, and directing people to priority bike routes that are away from congested roads to keep people safe. Next slide. Jenka Town Borough has received funds from us previously for other pedestrian-related improvements and are continuing on that trend, with five separate mini projects that are wrapped into this one proposal to install across the borough some raised crosswalks, pedestrian signage, curb bumpouts, as well as some ADA-compliant push buttons at crossings. Next, in Lansdale, the Borough is applying for park and trail improvements through three different parks in the borough, Memorial Park, Whistahicken Park, and Yorkett-Husplahanna Park. They'll be upgrading and repaving several trails and eliminating some ADA barriers such as steps, and planting trees to provide shade throughout these properties. Next up, in Lower Gwinnett, is the Marion Avenue Culvert Replacement. This is the replacement of a driveway bridge with a box culvert. The existing opening doesn't really convey runoff properly, and it causes local flooding issues. So the township is interested in fixing the situation and making rainy weeks like this one a little bit easier for the neighborhood to handle. Next up, Lower Providence Township is receiving funds to install a sidewalk on Lantern Lane to the Audubon Loop Trail. Actually, the sidewalk's on the east side of Paulings Road, between Lantern Lane and Audubon. It's crossed, like I was talking about, making connections to county properties. It's across the way from Mill Grove, and this will allow nearby residents to connect to the Audubon Loop Trail and the Greater Circuit Trail system. Next up is in Lower Southford, the Briarwick Park Stream Restoration Project. This is a grant to fund a stream restoration within the park along a tributary of Indian Creek. It's 875 linear feet of this stream channel. Next up, in New Hanover Township, they have applied for and will be receiving funds for the Wasmer Tract Park Phase 1. This is a new park for the township, and they are going to be installing two miles of trails, supporting infrastructure to this new property, and also includes parking areas, benches, directional signage, and ADA access upgrades. Norristown will be receiving $100,000 toward a multi-phase project along Arch Street. This will also install streetscape improvements along a significant portion of the road and connect residents into the Schuylkill River Trail. North Wales Borough is receiving funds for the Arts and Cultural Center Building for a security upgrade project. This is an institutional reuse of the St. Luke's Church, which closed to worshippers in 2022, but the Borough has taken it on as a new community center. But this is more of a high-tech grant to them to allow for wireless entry and broadband infrastructure. In Perkyomen Township, there is a project underway to create the Highland Huber Park. These funds will go toward Phase 1 improvements, which includes ADA access trails, a dog park, a community garden, a nature-based playground, among other amenities. In Pottstown, funds are being granted for the Brookside Park Redevelopment Project, which will allow the Borough to remove outdated playground equipment and install newer accessible equipment, including a bank shot basketball installation, which you can see on the bottom right, as well as landscaping upgrades. Red Hill Borough has partnered with the Upper Perkyomen Valley Library for three small improvements. The first is, this is another institutional reuse of an old industrial building. So that factors into their first request, which is for motorized blinds to be installed on the large windows, because the sunlight that filters into the building damages the looks. Newer blinds will help protect their collection from sun damage. They'll be replacing the outdoor light fixtures that line the walkway into the building, as well as installing automatic door openers for ADA accessibility. Worksford Borough is receiving funds toward the Main Street Streetscape Improvements, on Main Street, between Sixth and Seventh, adjacent to a new apartment building that's going in. This will expand existing street lighting and install decorative brick surfacing along this block. Next, in Tallemanson, Township will be receiving funds toward the Grist Mill Stormwater Basin Modification Project. This will allow the Township to convert two dry stormwater basins to dry extended detention basins, which will provide better nutrient sediment reduction through this waterway. This is part of a multi-municipal pollution reduction plan, so extends beyond just Tallemanson itself. Tract has partnered with Historic Tract to provide funds toward restoring the Speaker's House for the semi-quintcentennial. This is a house that belonged once to Frederick Mullenberg, the first Speaker of the House. And the organization is working as quickly as they can toward restoring the house to its former glory to be ready in time for the 2026 celebrations.
Sorry, quick fact-check. Speaker of the Pennsylvania House?
No, no.
Of the US House?
US House. US House.
Ben Franklin is the first.
I think he was both.
He's both? Oh, nice. Fascinating. All right, thanks.
Last but not least, West Norrington Township is receiving funds toward pedestrian improvements at the Boulevard of the Generals. There is a bus stop here that provides services to the adjacent shopping center and businesses at Valley Forge Business Center, but it's not a very safe place to wait for a bus or a bus will cross the street. So these funds will go toward installing a pedestrian crossing, which you can see in the photo, and bus shelters to allow for better transit access. And all of this combined, next slide, Gabby, adds up to the $3 million that we are allocated for this program. We're excited to see all of these vibrant projects being proposed. I wish we could fund everything, because $3 million is not the same as the $6 million in requests, but we had a really great batch of projects to choose from this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Thank you for all the work of the committee, the commission, the team. I am a huge fan of this program, as I've mentioned in different capacities. I don't want to get in trouble for saying this, but I would love to have budget conversations about how we can expand this program. It is capital dollars, correct?
It is capital dollars.
Which is always just, you know, more perfect.
He's over here, by the way.
But, no, it's great to be able to serve our municipalities and communities in a visible way where they can really see the impact of what, you know, what we're supporting. And the criteria that you also share is very thoughtful and comprehensive, so, you know, we've landed on some really great projects that I know they're all going to appreciate the funding for.
Yeah, and I would just say, I know how labor-intensive it is to go through the many applicants, and we wish we could, you know, help every applicant. So just really appreciate the thoughtfulness in terms of picking, you know, diversity of things to invest in, and also then just showing the diversity of the municipalities that we're supporting. So this is what, you know, partnership looks like and investment into our local community. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, look forward to getting around the county and seeing some of these.
Sounds like a visit to Tract is in order.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Great. All right, so I will motion to approve Resolution Number 1, as described by Ann Levitt Gruberger. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Okay. The applications are approved. Awesome. So moving on to the personnel list, I'll ask Tony Brew, our Chief Human Resources Officer, to present personnel list.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated May 15, 2025, with a timestamp of 6:50 a.m. Excuse me. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions? I'll make a motion to approve the May 15, 2025 personnel presentation, as given by Mr. Tony Brew. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Can't do all three at once. Can I do that? All three? Bids, RFPs, contracts, Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
I'll pick them separately.
All right. Should think about that for the future. So moving on to the topic of advertisement of bids and RFPs, Exhibit A. I'll make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County unattached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Awards and contracts, Section J. I'll make a motion to approve contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County unattached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Awards and contracts for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force. I'll make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force unattached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to general public comment. Are there any commenters?
Yes, we'll go back to Kate Firestone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone. My name is Kate Firestone. My pronouns are she/her. And I'm here as a resident of Montgomery County, as well as the Membership Director for the Pennsylvania Immigration Coalition. And in support of our Monco members, some of whom are in the room right now and that you will hear from, and who work with the immigrant community every day here, I want to say that I stand with them in affirming the necessity of adopting a welcoming county policy ordinance for Montgomery County. I understand at the beginning of this session, you mentioned that there will be policies that are going to happen, so, but I still want to read this so the sentiment is understood. So I first want to recognize our Commissioners for taking a principled stand against 287G and refusing to deputize local law enforcement as immigration agents. That is great. The recent op-ed demonstrates a clear understanding of the many risks in compromising local resources for federal immigration enforcement. But the arrest of Judge Hannah Dugan and the ongoing efforts to terrorize immigrant communities, if it shows us anything, it's that statements and promises are no longer enough. Montgomery County needs a binding ordinance, not just an op-ed. A policy memo or public statement can be reversed with a change in leadership. An ordinance, on the other hand, has the force of law and has democratic legitimacy and accountability behind it. The county's current stance to reject ICE collaboration unless there's a judicial warrant is commendable. is commendable. But without an ordinance or policies, it's a voluntary position, not a legal obligation. And as we've already seen this year, the county has transferred people to ICE custody, and internal communications confirm ongoing coordination. These practices, even when infrequent, contradict the spirit of the values that were expressed in the op-ed and show why clear legal boundaries are urgently needed. An ordinance would make these boundaries explicit, prohibiting ICE holds without a judicial warrant, banning county contracts with immigration agencies, and restricting data sharing unless legally required. This isn't defiance, it's sound governance, grounded in constitutional law and best practices from counties across the country. Philadelphia and Lehigh have already passed similar ordinances, and Montgomery, I believe, has the same authority and even now more reason to act. Because of the federal government's overreach evident in efforts to criminalize local resistance and intimidate officials like Judge Dugan, demands not just rhetorical opposition, but legislative courage. Codifying a welcoming county policy or policies ensures protections for the long term, no matter which administration is in power or who holds office. Montgomery County has rightly and commendably invested in immigrant communities and improved access to services. And these efforts are only truly safe when backed by enforceable protections. Otherwise, the very residents we say we welcome will continue to live under threat of detention and deportation due to the current gap between principle and policy. So if we're serious about protecting our immigrant neighbors, building trust in law enforcement, and resisting federal overreach, the next step is clear: pass the ordinance. Words matter and policy protects. Thank you.
Thanks. You want me to say something?
Can we discuss?
What? Yeah, I'll just—I'll just say one thing, which is that, you know, we've had a tremendous commitment to supporting immigrant communities in Montgomery County. I think a lot of people recognize that it's not just words. I think the fact that we brought on Nellie Jimenez-Aravalo just a month and a half ago speaks volumes, especially when you look at across the Commonwealth. I don't know how—you can tell me how many counties have an Office of Immigrant Affairs that is systematically tasked with coming up with not a single policy, which, you know, is sort of a one-off request, but instead a commitment over the long term to consistently think about everything we do and how it impacts immigrant communities. So that's certainly much more than words. And we are committed continually to that project. And there are going to be many things that we do. Some of them require votes, some of them don't require votes. Hires require votes, and we had to vote on that. But there's much more to come, and that's our commitment.
So I'm going to take a little bit further. So I just appreciate you continuing to come to advocate for a welcoming policy. And you mentioned certain counties that have passed an ordinance. Are we legally able to pass an ordinance?
The answer always—
I mean, like, let's just—because, you know, I'm just going to maybe have this conversation publicly, because I think it's important for the community that keeps coming to these meetings to understand what we can and cannot do as the class of county we are.
Right. So ordinances, I understand it largely to be used in the context of a welcoming policy, and the two jurisdictions referenced have home rule. So they have legislative authority within their jurisdictions that is greater than counties, and a county—to a county such as we are, that does not have home rule and cannot make rules for all the municipalities within our county. That doesn't mean that we can't look at and pass policies in the forms of resolutions for the county, but it means we can't pass an ordinance that binds subdivisions within our county in the manner that a county with home rule can.
So that's a very clear distinction, right, in terms of like what we can do in terms of an enforceable ordinance that could have penalties, correct? And I'm not the lawyer. I'm on, right? But we're talking about establishing policies, right? We have control to do that, that work to kind of demonstrate our values and our commitments, and we're still working through that. Nellie started 45 days ago, so we're, you know, we're trying to accelerate this work. You all sure appreciate that it is a dance and it is a balance because—and the op-ed was a brave, bold step for us to clearly state our commitment as a county. So thank you for acknowledging that and recognizing, but I just think it's important—and we're going to get out in front and help inform communities as to like what we can and cannot do. But that ordinance, because we've been asked to do other ordinances in my time here, and the path to get there because of the type of county we are, it's not the ordinance that you all are necessarily asking for. So what am I—Neil's looking at me like you're taking—it—I'm just—I mean, it's like, we keep—we keep talking about this, and I don't want people to feel like there's no—inaction.
Well, there's certainly not.
Yeah, there's a lot of action.
I think part of what was important about speaking out, and I think you do value that, and I think people should value that, because a lot of people are afraid to talk about the topic completely at all, right? And you can tell me if there's any other folks in the region that have enunciated a stand other than the sheriff of Bucks County, right? But I think it is important to recognize that we have the local authority not to use our resources to, as I said, enact a misguided federal policy that doesn't serve our communities. So that is clear, and it's important for us to put that out there. But we're also going to be very thoughtful across the board, across all the agencies, when we make decisions. And we want policy that is helpful, that best services our community, that, you know, serves our immigrant communities, and isn't just, you know, a feel-good thing, right? We actually want policy that's going to serve people. And it would be very easy to pass an ordinance—or a resolution, so to speak, that just says we're welcoming. But we also don't want people to be under the false impression that everything's okay and that our communities are safe at a time in which we don't know what the federal government is doing or planning to do, and how they will interpret and enforce the law in ways that has never happened before. I mean, they're invoking laws from the 1917, is the, you know, the, you know, the enforcement mechanisms that they're now claiming, and those are being challenged in court. So this is a fluid, moving situation where we have to be thoughtful on all the fronts. So I'm very confident, though, in our team and the expertise that we have, that people are very committed to serving our community as a whole and all of our residents. And as we recognized in the beginning of this meeting, that immigrant communities in Montgomery County are absolutely essential to the fabric of the community, and we're going to do everything we can in the decisions we make to recognize that. So I imagine we have many more comments on this topic, so why don't we go ahead and continue that.
Emilio Gutito.
My name is Emilio Gutrago, and a new resident in Montgomery County, living in Bridgeport, Pennsylvania. I strongly support the sentiment expressed in the Philadelphia Inquirer article written by Commissioners Makija and Wynder, opposing the restatement of the ICE 287G agreement in Montgomery County. This policy undermines trust between immigrant communities and local law enforcement, perpetuates harmful myths about immigrants that are not grounded in facts. Immigrants are vitals to the economic and social fabric of our country. They contribute billions, that with a B, in federal taxes and local taxes. They're essential in industries such as healthcare, construction, technology, and education. In 2023, alone, undocumented immigrants pay 89.8 billion in total taxes. That is 55.8 billion in federal taxes and 23.9 billion in state and local taxes. Much of this was paid through using individual taxpayer identification numbers, also known as IT numbers. Ironically, after years claiming that undocumented immigrants do not pay taxes, the Department of Homeland Security is now reportedly seeking access to IRS data for IT filings, highlighting just how significant these economic contributions they have. Regarding public safety, a study consistently shows that immigrants commit crimes at lower rates than native-born citizens. Communities withhold immigrant populations after experience lower crime rates in overall. The narrative of linking immigrants with the fentanyl crisis is both inaccurate and dangerous. According to the U.S. Customs and Border Protection and multiple independent reports, fentanyl is overwhelmingly smuggled to the U.S. by U.S. citizens, not by immigrants seeking asylum and better life. Policies like 289G sow fear and division, put hard-working family at risk, and distract from public safety priorities. I urge Montgomery County leaders to reject this harmful approach and instead invest in inclusive, evidence-based policies that strengthen community trust and celebrate the contribution of all residents regardless of their immigration status. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacob McCray.
My name is Jacob Stone McCray, and I'm the Community Resource and Advocate Specialist at Aklamo. As a representative of Aklamo today, I wanted to express our strong support for the county's decision to not adopt 287G. Now more than ever, we need to stand united to support the immigrant communities here in Montgomery County. Thank you again for taking this important action. Aklamo deeply appreciates your position, and I am confident the broader community does as well. Thank you again for your time, and I wish you a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Peterson.
I'm Tom Peterson. I'm a 32-year resident of Montgomery County, live in Cheltenham Township, and my father was an immigrant. I'm here to thank you for the op-ed that you guys wrote and got published yesterday. That was a brave thing to do. I'm also here to thank you for continuing to work with the community and to move us towards better policies for the immigrants in this community. I'm advocating for a welcoming county ordinance. I would like to—I would like to read—there are just six items that we would be asking for in the ordinance, and I just want to read those so that you're aware of them. Ensure no county employee, including law enforcement, collects or shares immigration status information. Prevent the sharing of personal data with immigration agencies without a judicial warrant. Prohibit agreements or contracts with federal immigration agencies such as ICE or CPB to operate or rent county facilities. The fourth one is to ban the detention of individuals by county authorities solely for immigration purposes. Forbid county officials, employees, or agencies from assisting federal immigration enforcement without a warrant signed by a federal judge. And lastly, prevent officials at Montgomery County Correctional Facility from holding people on ICE detainers or notifying ICE when they are released without a signed judicial warrant. So those are the six items that we're asking for. As far as the detention facility, my understanding is that they are holding people for up to four hours after they're, you know, they've achieved bail in order for ICE to come and pick them up. They are notifying ICE if there's somebody that's leaving the jail. They're giving ICE a good bit of notice to come and pick that individual up. And that's a detention facility in our own county, and we should not be doing that. And that's in writing in policies. There was a Freedom of Information Act that resulted in us seeing that there is in writing these types of policies from the correctional facility. Just quickly, my time is up, so I was going to cover another topic, but I'll stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question? Have you all worked on model ordinance language? So we've heard a couple of suggestions in terms of what an ordinance could look like. Because one of the things that I just, you know, and we can continue to have this conversation here in Montgomery County, I think that's important. But the model ordinance language should also—you should be also going to our municipalities, right? Have you gone to the council meeting in Narsetown? Because our 62 municipalities can write ordinances, and I'm just curious, because a model ordinance, right, that then could be—I'm going to just use an example. In Whipane Township, they did a reproductive health ordinance, right? And now that's a model for the rest of Montgomery County. I don't know how many other municipalities in Montco have a reproductive health ordinance. So I'm just—I just wanted to ask, does anyone know, have you drafted a model ordinance? And have you gone to any other—our local municipalities on this issue?
I believe a model ordinance was set—
Okay, okay.
By the A.C.L.U.P.A.
Okay. So somebody could pull that? Because I think that model ordinance should also be shared with the 62 municipalities as well. So we can—we can talk offline, and Nellie, maybe you can facilitate that. I know we've had conversations, but I just—I just was kind of thinking of other ways, right, to get at some of what you're doing. I can't speak for the municipalities, but I just know, being as though I sat on East Norton Board of Supervisors, there we could do ordinances because we had police force and all that good stuff. We have no jurisdiction over that. And then we can—yeah, I'll leave—I'll leave it at that.
I think what's important for our considerations for making what might feel like limited but actually could be sweeping in some ways in terms of the statements, like, we have a number of agencies we have to get together to be confident. For example, regards to even the first request of not collecting information, right? That is a significant process of tracking down every form, every sign-up, every, you know, every mechanism by which an individual who interfaces with the county provides their information. So I think, you know, that process takes some time, and one of the things that Nellie is doing is meeting with department heads' agencies to better understand, you know, those kinds of circumstances. So, you know, I think that's—that's part of what we're embarking on. So we're working diligently to get a sense of all of the different ways that people interface with agencies and departments of the county. So those things take time. Go ahead.
Michael Stoges.
On a very different topic, I'd like to comment and thank the commissioners on their action today on Exhibit 16 on Item G. That's the Speaker's House that we just talked about. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Historic TRAP Organization that's partnering with TRAP Borough to make this happen. I also have a long sort of connection to this property, and I have an even deeper connection to the family in general, too. I'm a direct descendant of Frederick Mullenberg. And I certainly thank the commissioners for today's action. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for a similar grant that you awarded us last year for that. I assure you, the work is going on as I speak. They're planning the floors for the second floor of the building right now. It will open next year to, you know, be ready for all the people— It will open next year to, you know, be ready for all the people coming to this area to enjoy some of the rich cultural history. Just very quickly, on Frederick Mullenberg, I could talk about the other family too, but I don't have the time. Just Frederick Mullenberg himself, he was the first speaker of the US House of Representatives. He actually had two terms as Speaker, in the first and third Congress. But before that, he also served government in many other capacities. I'd first point out, he was the first president judge in Montgomery County. He actually held courts in Barley Sheath Barn, and you see a mural of that in Court Reme. He also presided and had held court at the Speaker's House in Trap. He was the first recorder of deeds, first recorder of wills, just after the county was formed. And so he was deep into Montgomery County, was in the Continental Congress. He served, I think, a couple of terms in the Pennsylvania State General Assembly, was a speaker there as well. He was also chairman of the Constitution Ratification Committee, and he served, even after being the speaker, he served a number of other committees in the US Congress and cast the deciding and rather faithful vote on a number of important pieces of legislation. And he was sort of the reason why Washington was selected as the US Capitol, among others. But I could go on, there's a lot of history. The point is, I would like to invite the commissioners at any time to come and tour this property and the other three historic properties we have in Trap. And, you know, welcome to organize that tour, and I can work with Lee if you have an availability on that.
Thank you. Please organizing a comprehensive Monco history tour.
We, I want Mike Stoves to narrate. Twenty years ago, the Speaker's House almost was a CVS, and with Mike and a lot of other people.
Yeah, in 1999, it was a CVS. It probably would be closed right now. The CVS was located across the street, one of the separate buildings. And the county actually funded the grant to enable a very small organization to buy it. Over time, we've merged organizations, so we have a very large and mighty organization that manages this and other properties in Trap, and it's a great resource. And we're looking to work with the County 250 Committee, and we've got some things going on in the Freaky Home Valley.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vincent Nguyen?
Good morning, commissioners, officials, and fellow residents of Montgomery County. My name is Vincent Nguyen. I live in Lansdale, and I'm here with Udi Center. And I speak to you all today as a student, an advocate, and a child of immigrant parents. I want to begin by thanking the commissioners for their hard work to protect immigrant families and workers, and their statement yesterday about 287G. I recognize and appreciate all of your efforts, but I'm here to speak to build upon the sense of urgency that my fellow speakers have created before me. It is truly a relief to know that our commissioners are on the side of immigrant families. And so I recently graduated high school last year, and so I speak for all students in Montgomery County when I say that. Students deserve to feel safe, and their only concern should be their next exam, not being separated from their families. I collected responses from fellow students in Montgomery County who couldn't be here today. One student shared her worries about ICE detaining people informally simply for looking suspicious or not carrying ID, even US citizens. This affects everyone. It creates a climate of fear where education takes a backseat to survival. We know that when ICE is involved in or near our schools, students stop showing up, parents become disengaged, and it creates fear, and the fear silences us. Another student wrote that nobody should have to worry about anything other than doing their best in school. This emphasizes that these students, they emphasize that these students are just trying to make something of themselves and give back to society. These voices reflect a broader truth. Montgomery County should continue to be a place where immigrant youth feel supported, not watched or targeted. When local governments cooperate with ICE, even informally, it breaks trust and creates fear. Our community deserves more than good intentions. We need a lasting enforceable system, a policy that turns promises into protection. And this is more about politics. It's about more than politics, excuse me. It's about protecting the humanity and safety of students and their parents, preserving the right to learn without fear. It's about ensuring that Montgomery County continues to stand on the side of safety, dignity, and inclusion. I urge commissioners to keep the efforts that they've been going, that they've been, excuse me, to continue the efforts that they've been doing, and to take formal measures through an ordinance that informs and properly trains all county staff so that they can be protectors of immigrant residents. Thank you for listening, and I hope you'll continue to stand with us. Also, congratulations, Mr. Makija, on the ME nominations.
Thank you.
Sandra Tran?
Hi, good morning. My name is Cassandra Tran, and I'm a resident of Montgomery County as well as a first-year student at NYU. I, too, come forward as an advocate and also the daughter of immigrant parents. Today, I stand here in hope that our commissioners will take formal procedures to protect immigrant families, followed by the recent meaningful statements that were just mentioned. I want to talk about my own experience first regarding the spread of fear from the increase of unjust ICE actions this past year. So, as many of you may know, NYU is an incredibly global and diverse university, but as a result of that, I have witnessed the horrible consequences of ICE firsthand. A student from Saudi Arabia was stopped at an airport by ICE and forced to return to her home country. She was a junior, just one year away from completing her college education. Now she can never come back. Whatever dreams she had have been stripped from her. NYU has wholly obliged to ICE's increased presence, and with this, students have stated that they feel unsafe on our campus, and that many are afraid to attend in-person classes for fear of being abducted. What I've been seeing is fear, fear of desperation, fear of family separation, fear of losing opportunities to achieve our dreams through what we have learned from school. And this fear doesn't just harm immigrant students, it harms all of us. Montgomery County is home to nearly 95,000 immigrants. That's about 11% of our population, and this number is only growing. Immigrants are essential workers, small business owners, caregivers, neighbors, community leaders. Imagine, even briefly, if they were gone. Our community simply would not function the same. I've learned from the ACLU's 2024 report that Montgomery County unfortunately has had a long history of collaborating with ICE, more than any other county in the state. And although I recognize and appreciate the board's recent efforts thus far to protect immigrants, it saddens me to realize that Montgomery County, the Montgomery County I grew up in, has historically been a place of fear and division. That's why I'm calling on Montgomery County to live up to its identity as a welcoming county, not just in words, but through policy. I've always prided Montgomery County for its inclusivity. At North Penn, I remember our multicultural celebrations and our events of diversity. And I believe that we, as a county, have fostered an environment of inclusion and diversity. I understand that our board has already taken action to support our immigrants, which I thank you for. But I just want to urge that we make more clear preventative measures to make every resident, regardless of immigration status, feel safe, feel valued, and supported. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
David Wood from Ambler, and I'd like to address SEPTA's situation, because I think on my bus ride today, I saw that there's SEPTA, under SEPTA Now is a dot-com area you can access online, but also there was hearings on Monday and Tuesday at SEPTA headquarters. And commissioners, I hope that you can say something about that, even for someone concerned about a mother giving birth, if the roads are more congested, getting to the hospital becomes difficult, or anybody being rescued by EMS. So for life, consider taking a stand for SEPTA and our students. We have students here who are going to college. The other one I think I want to mention is trees in those projects. Lansdale, Norristown, and East Greenville, being green, have a tree planting, as mentioned, is one of the parts of the projects. And we've had giveaways of trees in Lower Gwinnett and Upper Dublin in the last year. So that's, I even have trees I give to neighbors sometimes, but it's really good to have that environmental aspect. And gentlemen from Trap, I noticed that picture had virtually no trees around the house. So maybe there's a wide-open possibility there to consider that amenity, which really helps, sort of a welcoming, if you want to talk about welcoming downtown, the canopy being emphasized. Thank you very much.
Denise Agortto?
Mi nombre es Denise Agortto. Soy directora ejecutiva de Unides para Servir Norristown. Es una organización que aboga por los derechos, la justicia, por la dignidad y por la igualdad en Norristown. Agradezco su editorial del día de ayer y su compromiso de no participar en el acuerdo de las 287G. Este es un paso, pero solo es un primer paso. Hemos estado abogando por la aprobación del Welcome-in Resolution, o Welcome-in Policy up, para los inmigrantes en el condado de Montgomery. En conjunto con Coalición Compe, Pennsylvania Immigration Coalition, con ACLU Pennsylvania, y otras organizaciones de base del condado de Montgomery. Estamos solicitando que se implemente el acta de bienvenida redactada y enviada ya a todos los comisionados. Esta polisam establece específicamente que los empleados del condado de Montgomery no deben cooperar con ICE, investigar a ciudadanos, ni obtener registros relacionados con el estatus migratorio. Esto incluye específicamente a los empleados del tribunal y de la cárcel. Un punto crucial en todo esto es la cárcel del condado de Montgomery, también conocida como MCCF. Según un informe publicado por ACLU de Pensilvania y la Facultad de Derecho de la Universidad de Villanova, la cárcel de Montgomery tiene la tasa más alta de cooperación con ICE de todos los condados del estado. Están deteniendo a personas hasta por cuatro horas únicamente para que venga el ICE y se las lleve. Y probablemente ellos también llaman a ICE para informarles cuando alguien es liberado. Todo esto sin una orden judicial firmada. Así es como muchas personas están siendo deportadas. No estaremos satisfechos hasta que el condado tenga una política establecida que indique que esto no debe pasar. Además, ningún empleado debe notificar a ICE. Necesitamos soluciones reales y específicas frente al terror de ICE que está pasando en nuestras comunidades. Agradecemos los gestos que han hecho, pero estamos pidiendo que se apruebe el acta de bienvenida. Ninguna de nuestras instalaciones del condado, y mucho menos nuestra cárcel, debe colaborar o comunicarse con ICE para deportar a miembros de nuestra comunidad sin la documentación legal. Comisionados, ustedes tienen el poder de hacerlo. Ustedes pueden proteger a nuestros vecinos y amigos. So estamos aquí todos pidiendo eso. I'm speaking Spanish, because I think my community deserves to have language access as well. So this is my thing. So Rob Dela Luz is, she's very terrorized, because ICE is around her house now. Their parents, they are afraid to take the kids to their school because of ICE around Norristown specifically. She advocate always at the community and give them advice about taxes. So she is the first thing. Sorry, he works with youth, so we are here in support of this. So we, you know, asking you, we're really asking you to pass this welcoming policy for our immigrants in all the county. So it's like there are almost two months that's happening, so, and nothing happened. We are not telling you to change anything with the municipalities, boroughs, or any township. We're asking you to pass this to support, because this is in the county, for the county jail, for the staff in this county. It's not about that. So I think it's time for you, because you already said many people are here talking the same thing. But we really, when I was here when this started, with the county jail, so I was witness many years, these deportations, kids with mental health, families separating families. So I think it's time for you guys, because if that was implemented, so do the research and see how you can, you know, regret that, how you can put something in place. We are not asking to regulate any other thing. It's regulate your own people, your own staff, so they cannot keep our families or members of our families in jail for more than four hours. Just don't call ICE, and just that's it. So you have already the sample, we send a letter, we send everything that you need. So you need more documentation, ask us, we can send everything that we can come and work together. And thank you. And also, I can say thank you that you hired Nellie, and she's in place, and she can work together. Very thank you, I know Nellie, but we need to work more than that, beyond that, because it's important for our community. So, thank you.
So, but I just, I just think it's important to be clear, there are things that we can do as a county, which we're, because I just don't want there to be this impression that we aren't working to advance the ball. There are other stakeholders, though, in Montgomery County that can play a role in standing up for immigrant communities. So I just, I applaud you, and listen, we can stay here all day and talk about this, and I want to hear from everyone else, but I just, you know, as we think about kind of going forward and seeing action, there are other stakeholders that can play a part in this. So, but I hear of leaning in on our correctional facility, right? So I hear you on that, and we hear you on that. So, and we're serious about policies, right? And Commissioner Makija said policies, right? It's not the same as an ordinance. So I just, I want, you know, as you go out and educate people that are not familiar with the way government works, I just want to make sure that the advocates are clear in terms of like what we can, cannot do, and keep pushing us. You know, we want, you know, we're elected to be held accountable. Oh, I know you, I know you will. Yeah, absolutely. But we want to be held accountable. So thanks for your comments. Thanks for giving me that.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Peter Fernandez?
Buenas tardes, comisionados y comunidad presente. Gracias por el trabajo que hacen cada día. Sabemos que no es fácil tomar decisiones que afecten a tantas personas y valoramos su esfuerzo.
Good afternoon, commissioners and community members present. Thank you for the work that you do every day. We know it's not easy to make decisions that affect so many people, and we value your effort.
Pero mientras esperamos, seguimos viviendo con incertidumbre, con miedo, con temor por nuestras familias, nuestros vecinos, por lo que pueda pasar mañana. Esa espera pesa, pesa en el alma, en quienes ya han dado tanto por este condado, quienes han trabajado duro para construir el Montgomery que hoy todos conocemos.
But as we wait, we continue living with uncertainty, with fear, with worry for our families, our neighbors, or what might happen tomorrow. That waiting is heavy. It waits on those who have already given so much to this country, who have worked hard to build the Montgomery County we all know today.
No podemos cerrar los ojos ante esta realidad. No podemos ver como si todo estuviera bien cuando hay tanta gente viviendo con angustia cada día. Por eso hoy les vuelvo a pedir con respeto que den un paso al frente y aprueben el Welcome-in Policy up.
We cannot close our eyes to this reality. We cannot pretend everything is fine when so many people are living in distress every day. That is what, that is what today is. I respectfully ask you once again to step forward to approve the welcoming policy.
Gracias, comisionados, por su tiempo, por su servicio, y por la idea de algo que están haciendo.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time, your service, and your leadership.
Thanks.
Cindy Levy?
And thank you for being at the zoning hearing board last night. Thank you for being there. I appreciate that.
My name is Cindy Levy, and I am...
Hi, my name is Cindy Levy, and I am a resident of Lower Gwinnett Township. I'm not sure if anything I have to say today is new. People have been saying the most important things. But I want to emphasize, first of all, I want to emphasize my gratitude and thanks for your courage, for your taking a very public stand, and for doing it in a way that I think gives it broader coverage. In the Philadelphia Inquirer, that's not just people here in Montgomery County. It's people in other counties. It's people in Philadelphia and beyond. And courage, I believe, is contagious. It takes courage to state that, unfortunately, in these times. So, really, thank you. The other things, two other things I want to say. One is, since getting a copy of that, I've talked to a number of people, and the response, whether they're immigrants or non-immigrants interested in immigration issues or not, the answer or the response I get is, "So, what does that mean? What's that going to mean? What difference is that going to make?" And I think this is a real issue. Number one, I hear you talking, and I've heard you before, and I've heard others talk, about the complexities of local government, of county government. But it becomes part of the problem because it's opaque, even to people who are very, very interested in this topic. So, who do we have to see now? Who should we be talking to? Who are the people who are responsible for what is happening and what may happen in the future? If it's difficult and challenging for you, it's really hard for us to understand. And that's an issue. The other thing I've heard a couple of people mention is the urgency. I was driving here from another meeting in Lansdale this morning, and luckily with streaming, I'm able to hear your comments, Commissioner Makija, and I'm really thankful for those, again. And what I've heard you saying is true. It's not just things that might happen, and you heard today. These things are happening now. And I don't know that anything that's been said so far is really going to change the fear that is in our community, the uncertainty that is in our community. And so, the urgency, as complex as it is, is really there. Somehow, we have to, together, find ways to move forward in meaningful ways, explain them clearly, and not just acknowledge that it's difficult and it will take time. So, thank you, and let's all work together and make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rose Dellos. Rose Dellos, hi.
And let me just say one thing in response to that, which is that, you know, our interest is to be comprehensive and real in our response and not simply symbolic. And so, we have to be thoughtful. And to your question of what does this mean, until there's a change in federal policy, no one's going to feel comfortable, right? And we should just acknowledge that reality. And many of the policies that people are advocating for today or other days, they can be helpful for a small subset of immigrants, a very small subset. But we want to have policies that are comprehensive and help as many people in the community as possible. Many of those things have nothing to do with the correction facility or other issues, right? So, we want to be comprehensive and actually take meaningful steps to support, you know, our residents.
So, hi, my name is Rose Dellos. I live in Norristown, and I wanted to come here and let you know about the experience. This was May 1st. So, my fiance got stopped. He got stopped by ICE DEA and FBI. I was on the phone the whole time. The first, they asked if he was a citizen, then they asked if he had tattoos. They let him go because he has DACA. Unfortunately, they were going to work, they took my cousin. They took my cousin because he doesn't have legal status. I'm sorry. And that happened May 1st. Just on Tuesday, we have ICE, there's undercover ICE around the area. I lived on the street. Me and my sister, I'm so sorry. I'm crying because it's so, so close to home. My sisters, in the morning, we do rounds every single time, just to make sure ICE's not outside. May 1st, my fiance called me. I came back. I went to where they were detained, and I asked them, "Where's your warrant? What are you doing?" "We're taking him. He doesn't have legal status." They took my cousin. Right, I go back home. There's an ICE, there's a van. We already know, I have the plates, we have videos, we have everything. There's a van standing, just standing in the corner. I had to wait the whole time there until they left. I approached them, I was like, "Hey, are you looking for anyone?" "No." I'm like, "Okay, do you need something? Is there something I can help you with?" "ICE, we're here." "I'm waiting for my boss." "There is no reason for ICE DEA, just not right now. I'm running for Norristown Council at large." "I don't know if we were targeted. There's many things that can occur, right? But ICE has been standing outside of the house. There's no warrants, there's nothing. It's insane living in fear, and I do apologize for crying, but it's something that..." And now, let me tell you something, my sisters, we're the ones that are citizens. We have to go drive four hours away. We have to go to the detention centers because obviously no one else can go. My cousin has his wife. She is due next month. He doesn't have tattoos, he just got here. There's, there's nothing bad about our family. And now, like I said, right now, it's crazy living in fear, and especially for us. We've always been scared of immigration. But now, it's more with this administration, we're not even sure what's going to happen. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stop until we can come up with something, you know, that protects the community. Because at the end of the day, we're in Norristown, there's a lot of Latinos, there's a lot of immigrants. I'm a child of immigrants. It's crazy living in fear every day. I'm running for council. And this totally took a turn. I had to focus on my family first. It's crazy to talk about it. It's scary. We live in fear, and the only reason I'm here is just to let you know, this is happening right here. And there's no warrants, there's nothing. They're just coming in and just, I don't know, spying to see who's not legal, but just taking them. I'm sorry for breaking down, but at home, so I just had to talk about them. We need all your efforts. We need to do more because at the end of the day, they said they were going to take the criminal, and they're just taking people that are working every day. So, I thank you for your efforts, and I hope we can do more for the community so they can be, they can feel protected. It's not pretty living in fear.
Thank you. Thank you for your bravery. Thank you for sharing. And thank you for running for office because we need you to share that experience in a real way so that people understand what you're saying. And, you know, as we've said, you know, for all of these things, I mean, in the instance that you're talking about, I hate to say, there's not a county policy that can stop ICE, right? That can stop them from doing what you described. And part of what we need to do is, is obviously do what we can as local leaders, but explain your story and others, and how harmful it is to the community and to families, so that when people have a chance to vote, they can change the course of what's happening. So, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would just echo that. You know, I saw you the other day, and we talked a little bit. I remember what it was like when I stepped up to run for office and didn't know what the hell I was doing. But it started with wanting to kind of change my community and make an impact. So, I also want to applaud you for stepping up to run and lead. And, yeah, you're, you know, we have to tell these stories. And so, we have to be vulnerable. So, you know, thank you for being vulnerable in that moment. Because when you can't see kind of the faces, right, of people that are experiencing this firsthand, it's easy for you to kind of put it to the side, or, "Oh, that's, you know, that doesn't affect me." But when you see, you know, hear your comments and hear those real experiences, you know, that just, again, just reminds me of the work that I, that I need to do. And so, so thank you for being here, and thank you for having the courage to speak out. I just, I just want to say something. I was driving, you know, I grew up in the Norristown area. I was driving the other day, and I was getting ready to pull into the parking lot. And there was a, and I'm just compelled to say this in this moment, but I was sitting at the stop sign, and there was a police officer on the left-hand side. And there was a Latino father walking his son to school. And in that moment, right, I just kind of thought about what that father might be thinking about in that walk. And I didn't know his status or anything. I didn't even kind of stop to wave to him. But that was just a moment of reflection, right? And just very visible for me in terms of on my way into work, like what that father and that son might be thinking, you know, every day that they start their day and go out. And so, we'll continue to stand with you all, and we'll continue to have conversations. I think we had a conversation this week with the, or last week, all running with the Immigration Coalition, so, but thank you, thank you for that.
And you mentioned that they did not have judicial warrant. And so, one of the things that we talked about and what we wrote is that we want to see a judicial warrant if there is any action in relation to the county. And so, that's something that our solicitor is looking at, and how we can require that. Go ahead. All right, so any closing comments? Yeah, I think I'm going to move on to salary board in a minute. And I'll just, yeah, just as a general comment for everyone who spoke, you know, thank you for your advocacy. And, you know, I'm very proud of our team and their commitment. Please, talk to Nellie directly. Do you already know Nellie? Do you have a relationship? I already see you getting contact information, so that's exactly what needs to happen. And, you know, please, you know, Nellie, talk to everyone here, and, you know, we'll stay in touch with them as, as things are happening and moving forward. And, you know, as we've recognized, we are here to represent everyone in Montgomery County, and we don't think what's happening federally is helpful for our communities. And it's actively harmful and breaking apart families in ways that are, you know, are heartbreaking. So, you know, thank you for sharing. You know, we'll have much more to come in the weeks and months to come. So, fortunately, for the next three, three, three and a half years at least. So, we're going to work together on this. All right, with that, our upcoming meeting is June 5th, 10:00 a.m. in the boardroom. And I will make a motion to adjourn this one, the May 15th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second, Beth.
Seconded. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the meeting is adjourned. We'll have a salary board meeting. I'll move over if you want. Okay, so I'll ask, well, first, is there any public comment for salary board? Okay, I'll ask Tony Brew to present our salary board list.
All right, good afternoon, members of the salary board. We have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It is a four-page document dated May 14th, 2025, with a timestamp of 6:50 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, and are presented for the salary board's consideration.
Okay, any questions? I'll make a motion to approve the May 15th, 2025 salary board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew, our Chief Human Resource Officer. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and any closing comments? I'll make a motion to adjourn the May 15th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by all at heart. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the meeting is adjourned. That's all you need.